Hello and welcome to the School Board Meeting on September 9th. Before we move forward, I'd like to call the meeting to order and have folks join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, stand up, and then remain, please remain standing for a moment of silence that I'll announce in a second.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd request you to keep standing to share a moment of silence for school bus driver Heidi Carson and former American Indian Education Program Coordinator Clarence Pacanow, both of whom passed away recently. Thank you. We are working from an unamended agenda, so the agenda is as state stands in front of you. May I please ask for a motion to approve the agenda in a second?
So moved?
Second. Motion by Jackie, second by Sir Kaudin. All those in favor of passing the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes on a five-zero vote. As you can see, we're missing Cory today. Cory is advocating on behalf of public schools in Washington DC, so we wish him the best and thank him for his time and contributions towards this wonderful cause. Thank you. Moving to the next recognition by the School Board, I'd like to welcome Director of Elementary Education Jeremy Sorensen to the podium to introduce Christine Evans, Principal of Southview Elementary, which received a Minnesota School of Excellence Award for 2024-2025.
All right. Good evening, Vice Chair Isaacs, Superintendent Bolsoni, and Board members. We're excited to be here tonight. I have the pleasure of introducing Christine Evans and acknowledging the School of Excellence Award they received. MESA is an organization in Minnesota. It's the Minnesota Elementary School Principal Association. A number of our principals in 196 are involved with that organization and actually are in leadership roles, so we're very proud of that. But they're also the organization that provides these awards. There's a very rigorous process to even be considered for this, and what I have with me is the social media post that MESA put out about the award, is what I was going to read to introduce Christine and her team. Proud to announce Southview Elementary as a Minnesota School of Excellence. They excel in engaging parents as equal partners in student learning with inclusive decision-making and staff-led classes like Building Strong Family Series. So that's what an outside organization acknowledges and recognizes about Southview. I want to say with all the initiatives we've been doing in the last few years, PBIS, our transition to structured literacy, our assessment framework, Southview has been a leader in that as well. So this is a well-deserved award, and I'm excited to acknowledge that and spread the word about Southview.
Good evening, Vice Chairperson Isaacs, School Board Members and Superintendent Bolsoni. I am incredibly proud to be here to represent Southview. We're thrilled that we've been recognized as a Minnesota School of Excellence. Last year, we embarked on a very rigorous process of reflection, gathering input from our staff, from our students, and from our families. And then we use this feedback to celebrate our strengths and create plans for areas of growth. Our entire school community worked so hard to go through this review process, and it's a tremendous honor to be one of six schools in the state of Minnesota to receive this award this year. We will be celebrated at the MESA Institute in February, followed by a school-wide celebration in the spring. There is so much for us to be proud of as a Southview community. Thank you for your continued support of Southview and for all of the schools and students in our district. Thank you.
Another congratulations to Principal Evans and the entire Southview community. That's a wonderful, wonderful honor. One in six, that's outstanding. Next, we'll move to Superintendent's recognitions of students and staff, and I'll turn it over to Superintendent Bolsoni.
Thank you very much. I want to start by recognizing our outstanding District 196 employees for getting us off to a great start to the 2024-25 school year. Our students are excited to be back at school, building relationships with friends and teachers, provide the foundation for success every school year. Each of the school leaders I've talked to have commented on how well the school year has started. It seems that student, staff, and families are already back into the swing of school. At a future meeting, we will provide a full report on enrollment, welcoming activities, and new curriculum being implemented this year. It's been a busy and rewarding couple of months preparing for the return of students. Next, I'd like to acknowledge School Board Appreciation Month. In past years, this has been celebrated in February, however, we're doing it now in September. As locally elected officials, School Board Members provide a crucial bridge between the local community and the school district. Your tireless dedication, vision for educational excellence for all, and responsible stewardship of public resources are instrumental in helping all of us fulfill our mission of educating, developing, and inspiring our students for lifelong success. On behalf of all of our students, staff, families, and community, thank you for your willingness to serve in this capacity. Next, and finally, I would like to invite Janet Swuchakowski to the podium to be introduced as our new Director of Communications. Janet just started on the job on August 30th. She replaced Tony Tashnew, who retired after a 27-year career in the district. Janet also has more than 25 years of experience in school communications, most recently as the Vice President of CEL Marketing PR Design, which provides communications and marketing services to schools and districts across the state. During her five years at CEL, Janet provided senior public relations counsel to school and district leaders, consulted on four successful referendum campaigns, and led the company's strategy and crisis response support for schools. Janet started her communications career working for a school district in suburban Milwaukee, Wisconsin. In 1999, she took a job as the Communications Coordinator for the Yezetta Public Schools, and three years later was hired as Executive Director for Communications for the Minnetonka Public Schools. She led the department in Minnetonka for the next 15 years. In 2017, she accepted a position as Associate Vice President for Public Relations at the University of St. Thomas and worked there for two years before moving to CEL in 2019. We're very fortunate and lucky to have Janet, and Janet, we'd like to welcome you tonight.
Thank you. Vice Chair Isaacs, School Board Members, and Superintendent Bolsoni, it is my honor to be here, and it's my honor to serve the District 196 community, students, families, and staff. I have dedicated my career to public education. I believe there's no higher calling in the world, so I'm thrilled to be here. My first week on the job has been one of full joy. I had the great opportunity to welcome families and students back on the first day, spent some time at some football games last weekend, and had a great welcoming reception from colleagues across the district, so I'm just thrilled. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and that concludes our comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome again, Janet. We're fortunate to have you and lucky to have your talents join us, so thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, and we have 22 items, so please bear with me as I wrap my way through the list. Number one, we have the minutes of the August 5th 2024 regular School Board Meeting. We have minutes of the August 5th 2024 special School Board Meeting. We have gifts, summary of investments for July 2024, summary of claims for July 2024, Treasurers' Report June 2024, permanent fund transfer for fiscal year 2024, revenues and expenditures report for July 2024, pay rates for substitute, temporary, and part-time employees, agreement for student teaching with Northwestern University of St. Paul, agreement for clinical experience SLP with Lewis University, personnel, ninth grade social studies curriculum, intermediate school district 917 tuition agreement for Dakota County Area Learning School, appointments to the Legislative Advisory Council, appointments to the Community Education Advisory Council, appointments for the Curriculum and Instruction Advisory Council, personal injury settlement agreement, employment agreement, request for MSBA Legislative Platform Resolution, Policy 503, Student Rights and Responsibilities, and School Board Work Group for Board Handbook. Since this is a consent agenda item, I'd request a motion and a second. Motion?
Second.
Thank you, Sir Kaudin, second by Leah. Does anyone have any questions, comments? Actually, before that, are there any questions and comments from the audience? Hearing none? Questions, comments, or anything the Board would like to discuss? Hearing none? Do we have a motion for, do we have a vote for this motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes on a five-zero vote. Next, our reports. I'd like to welcome Jeremy Sorensen, Eric Hanson, Kaia Bruce, and Janet Finman to give an update on the summer programs.
All right. Well, good evening again. Good evening, Vice Chairperson Isaacs, Superintendent Bolsoni, and Board Members. We're here tonight to provide some highlights and information regarding our summer programming. All right, we're starting off with information about our summer meals program. In the subheadings of this slide, we're highlighting the strategic priorities that most closely align to our summer meals program, well-being and equity. We believe our summer programs connect with all of our priorities and wanted to point out that we are connecting areas with the priority it most closely aligns with, so you'll see this throughout the presentation tonight. Coming off our first school year with free meals for all and understanding that food insecurity is a persistent concern for many families, we wanted to start by sharing about our summer meals program. Having access to consistent and nutritious meals allows students to enter the learning environment as their best selves. Our 196 food service program provided meals throughout the summer in the months of June, July, and August. Through our summer meals program, we have designated sites where students and families can come to access free breakfast and lunch. This year, we partnered with Open Door, who is a nonprofit, to help take meals off-campus to neighborhood sites and help to serve around 3,000 total meals to families who couldn't travel to our summer program sites. The month of June is highlighted in the top portion of this chart, so the gray and white top portion of this chart highlights the month of June because we were serving meals at all of our sites that were welcoming students for summer programming. In June, combining breakfast and lunch, a total of 42,053 meals were served. So it's broken down on there by levels, so elementary, middle school, high school, the open door deliveries, those are our totals for June. If you include meals served throughout the entire summer, which is what the bottom line of the chart indicates, so that line that's kind of pink-colored up there, the totals for June, July, and August are 54,303 meals served this summer, which is about 5,500 more, or a 10% increase in the number of meals served last summer. We want to say congratulations and thank you to our ISD 196 Food Service Department. Now that we're going to get into some of our summer programming, I want to say even though we're discussing separate areas of summer programming, it's important to know that our programming is coordinated and planned in collaboration between district departments and are often happening concurrently. As an example of this, Camp Propel, an extended school year, or ESY, both happen in elementary schools at the same time. Our students are interacting and connecting with each other throughout the day, so although they're separate programs, they have the appearance of being a single program if you're in the building. For this example, I'll be discussing Camp Propel, and you'll hear more about ESY from Janet Finman later in the presentation. So this year, we made a few adjustments to our elementary programming. The summer, we didn't have access to ESAR funds, which are funds provided by federal government to support students for the purpose of COVID relief. Additionally, there was new legislation that impacted unemployment laws, and we had concerns about being able to staff our summer programming, particularly some of our hourly positions like transportation, clerical, and support staff, without aligning our programming across levels. This is one of the main reasons that the elementary summer programming was moved earlier in the year and was held in June. For the reasons mentioned above, the elementary level, we pared down and focused on our main summer program this year, which is Camp Propel. Camp Propel is a program for our elementary students grades one through five. It provides both academic and social-emotional support, and students are invited to participate through a process of using assessment and classroom data to identify students who may benefit from some additional support. This summer, we served over 2,000 students from across the district. We had 149 teachers and 145 classrooms engaged in learning across our elementary buildings. Despite the changes in offerings, despite the change of offering this in June, these numbers are consistent with our student attendance and staffing in previous years. Additionally, we conduct a staff and family survey at the end of each Camp Propel session. The results from the surveys were consistent with prior years in that 95% of families had a positive outlook on Camp Propel regarding if their students were excited to come and if Camp Propel met their students' needs. The staff survey was also consistent with past years, generally positive feedback around the length of day and resources provided. However, the exception would be that both parents and staff would prefer holding it later in summer, like we used to do. This is something we'll continue to look at as we plan for the future. Additionally, at the elementary level, Camp Invention STEM was held at Silver Bell Learning Center and had a focus on creating, collaborating, and gaining confidence through building prototypes and solving real-world problems. This summer's program engaged elementary-age students from around the district, including 29 students who participated with support from Achievement and Integration. Camp Invention is a one-week program and supports the Achievement and Integration Plan.
Good evening. I'm excited to share with you the secondary summer programming at our middle schools and our high schools this past summer. Our middle schools hosted over 806 seventh and eighth-grade students this summer at their home middle schools. Of the 800 students, 60% of the students were incoming sixth graders who were brand-new to their middle school. Our middle school students engaged in social-emotional learning for the second year in a row, which allowed our counselors to meet with students, separated into small groups, to discuss subjects such as digital distraction, social skills, managing stress, disagreeing respectfully, and perspective-taking. Our middle school program not only focused on math and reading, but also in community building, field trips, forming relationships with their teachers, opportunities to practice the skill of opening lockers, which is a very important one, and ultimately assisting with the transition for our middle school students to their next grade. In addition, 40 of our middle school students engaged in a University of Minnesota Business Camp hosted by the Carlson School of Management. This afforded our students to have a campus experience similar to college students and was made available through our Achievement and Integration Plan. Our high school's summer programming was also well-attended and hosted approximately 1,020 students. Our high school students in total earned 1,884 credits through credit recovery, as well as subject acceleration in the area of math. 15% of our high school summer students were incoming ninth graders receiving support to ensure their success as they transitioned from middle school to high school and have an early opportunity to learn about their new school. Our ninth graders during their freshman academy had the opportunity to engage in summer learning with elective and core classes, meet high school staff members, build community through fun activities such as tie-dye, shirt-making, ice cream social, scavenger hunts, and various field trips, making this experience engaging and purposeful. Thank you so much for letting me share about our secondary schools.
Good evening. Community education was busy this summer, educating, developing, and inspiring students for lifelong success. Department-wide, we saw a 20% participation increase over last summer, with our largest increases happening in sports camps and adult enrichment. 182 families with children birthed through age two participated in 18 early childhood family education classes in July. Age-specific classes, along with family playtimes, and topic-specific classes were offered. 12,616 students participated in over 900 youth enrichment summer programs. The most popular offerings included sports and theater camps, our Kahoots Academic Correspondence Program, and Preventing Brain Drain, which helps students retain and improve their learning in math and reading. Over 1,300 participants ages six months through adult learned to swim or improve their skills this summer. 49 were trained as lifeguards and/or swim instructors. 86 got their fitness on in water exercise classes, and over 100 community members took advantage of our open swim hours on two Fridays in July and August. The Adult Basic Education Program also continues to grow. 366 students learned English and worked on receiving their GED or diploma. 84 students under the age of 21 earned 168 high school credits. This was the highest number of student contact hours for a summer session since July of 2013 and the highest number of credits earned in a summer session since July of 2016. As usual, River Valley Project Explorer, our Adults with Disabilities Program, was active with over 1,700 enrollments in 58 activities. Popular ones included mini-golf, day trips such as to the SPAM Museum and baseball games, swimming at Redwood Community Center, and of course, dances. Over 350 adults with disabilities attended this summer's annual Rock and Roll Summer Dance. Adult enrichment saw a 110% increase in participation over last summer. This was due to fitness and sports activities, as well as fused glass and Bob Ross oil painting classes. And lastly, our community was active in our district facilities with over 8,600 hours of community rental time. This is equivalent to 350 days within 77 actual days. Add to that our community education and District K-12 programs we're sharing with you this evening, and that equals nearly 60,000 hours or 2,450 days within less than three months.
As Jeremy noted, we also offered extended school year summer learning opportunities. Extended school year is a specialized summer opportunity with a focus on goals and objectives specific, I'll say that right, to students' individual needs. We know that the quality of our program depends heavily on the staff that teach. We are excited to share that the majority of our staff were internal. This is important because when we have staff that know the students and the environment, it leads to a better overall experience for our students. It is always our goal to have as many staff of our current teachers supporting students during extended school year, and as you can see, we had a total of 64 licensed staff and the majority were our own. We offer learning opportunities across K through 12 buildings. We had 336 students enrolled at the elementary and 333 students enrolled at the secondary level, totaling 669 students K through 12 that attended extended school year. We also have extended school year at Early Childhood Special Education, Dakota Ridge, our Transition Plus program, and you can see the enrollment numbers listed on the slides. Overall enrollment for extended school year was comparable to past years. We were monitoring this closely because it was a significant change, so the change in timing did not significantly impact student enrollment and attendance. The photo you see in this slide is of our students from Transition Plus exploring recreation and leisure opportunities as adults via community-based instruction at Capone Art Park located in Eagan. Other engaging, I'm going to back up here. Other engaging offerings at Transition Plus happened through our partnership with Ble Happy Food Truck, owner of a parent of a current student recently opened up food truck business and has a passion to support people with disabilities, gain and competitive employment. She partnered with Transition Plus over extended school year to help students prepare and sell lemonade from the Transition Plus parking lot over ESY. Students were able to work on the food truck in shifts and sell to the public. Other fun offerings this summer highlights our AAA philosophy. Dakota Hawks Camps had about 70 students with special needs from across the district attend camp. Athletes built skills in soccer and floor hockey while at the same time learning how to be a part of a team. The athletes took time to celebrate the three state championships this past school year from across our District 196 athletic teams. This camp is a great way to promote and celebrate Dakota County Hawks athletics. In review, some strengths that we noticed as we offered our summer programs. We had a large variety, as you heard tonight, of engagement, engaging opportunities for students. We had a good turnout of our individual or internal staff teaching and supporting our programs. Attendance was good and is a district priority. Some opportunities we have that we're looking forward to is we have a responsibility of a continuous improvement, and we'll be looking more deeply at how the summer offerings impacted student learning through a variety of modes. We also want to enhance opportunities for direct instruction, explicit instruction on identified need areas for our students, and ensure that the data we are collecting is giving us the information needed to monitor and adjust as necessary. Next steps, we plan to review our current programming, the timing of our programming, the structure of our programming, et cetera, and consider necessary modifications. We'll continue to monitor the impact of the new unemployment requirements and how they impacted our programming. Overall, we had a successful summer of learning and fun for our students, and thank you for your time and hearing our report tonight, and I'll open it up for any questions.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from the audience? Seeing none. Any questions from the Board? Any comments? Go ahead, Jackie. Oh, go ahead, Sir Kaudin.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Oh, I have a few questions. I'm glad to hear that you said you did a family survey. I'm thinking about the change in the date, the start time, from later in the summer to earlier in the summer. There were several reasons for that. I'm glad to see that you're doing a family survey, which we always all do, to see, and you addressed it three different times, about what are we going to do? How does that work? How do we use that data that we get from the families and our staff to massage that around if that's the way we're going to do it? State law indicates a lot of that information also, but thank you. That was one of my questions. The other one might be Jeremy or Eric's to answer. Did we end up seeing the same type of percentage of students or of teachers in our district, our district teachers, as was listed as, you know, in special ed, there were, you know, 36 internal, seven external? Did ours, did regular high school and middle school and elementary school run about the same?
For Camp Propel, I don't have the exact percentage, but it was, we had very high of our own teachers in Camp Propel for the same reasons that Janet expressed. It's just a better student experience when we have teachers who know our system, our environment, our students. So we work hard to do that. I can get those, I could get that information to you, but it's a really high percentage of our own teachers.
Because we've had troubles before, not feeling those, and exactly that's what we want, is to have our students have experience with our teachers and our curriculum in our buildings so that if they came to Rosemont Middle, they got to see somebody that worked in Rosemont Middle and that made a bridge, right, a connection for them day one.
Yeah, I think to your point, Jackie, it's that balancing act of ensuring it's meeting our student needs, and we know our programming is better when we have our own teachers, we know our community, and know our kids, so constantly balancing that.
So thank you. Anyway, the report was wonderful. It's fun, it's always fun to hear what all has gone on, and I did think about taking that painting class, and I don't know where the summer went. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Go ahead, Sir Kaudin.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you. I mean, it's always good to have a report how we closed the summer, just to kind of look it back, the impact that we made, especially with the meals program, the summer meals program. So that's a number that caught my eyes, is that 54,000. That's significant and just shows that we're making a notable impact. So with, given the increase of the participation or the need, just wanted to know, just curious, how we compared this to the last year? Are we expanding? If yes, I mean, it looks like we've grown and there's a need. Is there ways that, are we looking, expanding the program to ways that we could deliver? So?
Jeremy, can you answer that?
So I'm sorry if I understood your question as, like, kind of comparing last year and this year and what the growth was.
Yeah, last summer, yeah.
I'd have to talk with Spencer Fisher from our Food Service Department, but I do know that the one big new thing was using Open Door to take some meals off-site, and he expressed that there was about 3,000 total meals there. And then, I know our Camp Propel numbers, the ratio of students who attended that was very similar to the ratio of our, compared to our overall enrollment through years. So we had quite a few kids during Camp Propel, so that month of June is a big month for us. us, too. So providing food during those programs, and I'd have to check if we've always provided food at those same programs, but we were able to get a lot of meals to kids when they were in our buildings.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the summary of the summer programming. I found it really helpful and gave me an idea of the numbers of attendance. I appreciate you putting some other information in there, because I did have some questions around how does that compare to the last one to three years of summer programming? I would love to see in the future specific demographic information, especially if we're talking about equity. It would help to identify that, and I think that our constituents would also be curious. And that's just specifically to closing the opportunity gap, but for all protected classes, well, racially-protected classes, but other identity groups as well, when it turns in terms of race. The second piece I would love to see is our goals. What are our goals beyond just attendance? And then even a definition for the public, if they're seeing this for the first time, if we could define some of the terminology that we use. I know that it's a lot. It's like a different language when you become, get into the education system, but even a simple definition in the presentation, if people want to go back, what is social-emotional development or well-being? What does that mean? How are we defining that? What are the intended outcomes? I heard some intended outcomes for what students did learn. I think that would be helpful in the presentation as well, if we can capture it. Words are great, but this is my, you know, thinking as a student, visual is really helpful, too. So this is a great, great piece of information. Thank you so much for that, and I'm looking forward to updates in the future.
Yeah, thanks for those suggestions. We'll definitely consider. I think they're good, good ideas.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just add to the commentary that this takes a lot of time to compile, and I really appreciate the collaboration that went into compiling this. We always know there's a lot going on, but this, seeing it, is incredible. It is incredible to see the AAA philosophy continue over the summer because education doesn't take a break, and it's wonderful to see the time, effort, and structure that each of you has put into the program as well. And to what Director Hanson has said, I can attest to the struggles of fighting with a locker. I participated in that fight and I did not win. So, so, well, good observation. Thank you again, and I really appreciate it. All right. Moving to old business, there aren't any items, so we'll skip to Section H, New Business. And for that, I'll welcome Jill Coyle to the podium to talk about Policy 506, Student
Good evening, Vice Chairperson Isaacs, members of the board, and Superintendent Bolsoni. I am with you tonight with proposed changes to Policy 506, Student Welfare. This policy governs various topics related to student health and welfare. The proposed changes tonight are relatively minor and can be found in Sections 2, 5, and 7 of your policy. So let's go through each of those sections individually. First, with regard to the proposed changes to Section 2, those are recommended by the district's Health Services Coordinator, intended to update language and processes, in particular with regard to communicable diseases. You will see changes in the section now titled Communicable Diseases, and those changes include a statement that some diseases are reported to the Department of Health. The section also includes a more robust description of the factors that will be considered by the school district when deciding when a student should be excluded from school due to a communicable disease, chicken pox, measles, that sort of thing. The Minnesota MSBA's model policy language was consulted as we developed the language for this section. Okay? Moving on to the changes to Section 5, these changes primarily concern the location of naloxone, an opioid antagonist. You'll see that the district is recommending removing the language secured from the description of where we keep naloxone, and the idea here is to make it more available to staff members in the event that it's needed. And then finally, there are changes to Section 7 that are proposed to better reflect Minnesota's Free School Meals Program and also to reflect the changed name of the school district's Nutrition Services Department. And then in addition to those changes, you'll see a few statutory changes in the References section. So this is just a review item tonight. It will be back to you as Old Business for Action on September 23rd, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have tonight.
Thank you, Jill. Are there any questions from the audience? Hearing and seeing none, are there any questions from the school board members? Any points of clarification? All right, we'll see you on September 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no item in Other Action, so we'll move to Board Member and Superintendent Updates. Before I give my update, I'll see if there's any other board colleague who has an update to share. Go ahead, Jackie.
I would just like to thank everyone for the successful first day. Jennifer, it's always like this at 196. It's always exciting. It's always just run perfect, and everybody gets to their place and everybody gets back and on time. But really, thank you, if you were a bus driver, if you were a building chief, if you were a teacher, if you were a clerical, if, wherever your role was, you made an impact on somebody's life that first day. And I can't help thinking about those little littles that get on the bus for the first time and go off to school, or thinking about the high school kids that sat on the football field waiting for the sun to come up on their very first day of their last year at school, at high school, and then they'll sit, the last day of school that they're at the high schools, they'll sit and watch the sun go down, encapsulating their year. So thank you, everyone who made those students days and weeks just remarkable. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Anyone else? All right, so I'll actually also just echo what Jackie said. Really well said, Jackie. We've gotten used to how well oftentimes the first day goes, but I want to acknowledge all the work that each of you and the staff has put together to make Day One truly remarkable. Twenty-nine-some thousand students, out of which about 27 or so get bust every day, is no mean feat to pull that off, and it only happens because of the love and consideration and thoughtfulness of our staff. So thank you to everyone for making Day One success. Thank you, Jackie. Before I move to Superintendent Bolsoni, I just want to kind of take a quick moment and acknowledge that last, at the end of August, Art Coulson resigned from his position on the board after serving a remarkable 16 years on the board. Art was a wonderful, thoughtful partner to each of us, and his presence and counsel will be missed on the board as well. The process for Art's replacement will be shared at a forthcoming school board meeting, but I really wanted to just thank Art for his dedication and his years of service. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Superintendent Bolsoni.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair Isaacs. As we start the school year, I would like to encourage all parents and guardians to update their family information on record with the district by completing the online review through their Infinite Campus Parent Portal account. This is the one time each year we ask parents to complete the review. It is important for students to have current information in order to notify parents and guardians in case of emergency, changes in the school schedule, or other important information. Please contact your school if you need any assistance with this process. Thank you, and this concludes my report.
Thank you. With that, we're at the end of the meeting, so I'd like to request a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Sir Cowden.
Second.
Thank you, Jackie. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no, and we'll adjourn on a five-zero vote. Thank you. Our next meeting will be on September 23rd. Thank you.